All right, it's 5:30, so welcome to this evening's work session. We will start by conducting roll call, Commissioner Sana Gregory. You're muted, Commissioner.
I am here.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin. Commissioner Felicia Franklin. Commissioner Demont Davis. All right, we'll proceed on with the agenda. Next item up is the, okay, Commissioner Demont Davis is present. Next item on the agenda is any discussion items for the 2020, uh, I'm sorry, February 2nd of 2021 BOC meeting. Any Commissioner like to discuss any of those items?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I am present, Commissioner Franklin.
Yeah, so, uh-
And I do have a couple of questions on the items, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, which items would you like to discuss?
Okay, I think one of the items on the agenda was item number three, I believe. Um, recommendation for flooring?
Recommendation for what? I'm sorry, Commissioner.
It's for additional carpet for buildings.
Okay. Is there enough? Yes, go ahead.
There's a question, yes. Uh, as we, as I go through the buildings, the carpet that we're purchasing, um, it stains so easily and also it doesn't wear as much. And throughout my travels, uh, throughout the state of Georgia and other municipalities, what I'm noticing is that they're getting away from carpeting and they're actually putting down economical plus durable flooring as opposed to carpet itself. So I don't know if this is carpet or if it's a different type of flooring, but, um, you know, especially like when you go into police department, some of these, um, rec centers, the carpet is very difficult to clean. So, um, I'm just, I just want to ask that question if I can. So one, is it actually carpet? And two, have we looked at other options such as other municipalities who are using a more durable type of flooring?
Uh, Ms. Stanford, you have a response for that.
Good evening, Board. Commissioner, that's a great question. Um, the vendor, I believe that's on record, I think they handle not just carpeting, but they also handle kind of tile flooring and a multitude of flooring um, under their contract. I, I believe this was a contract up for renewal. Uh, but your point is well taken, one of the things that through building the maintenance assessment, um, we tried to do a couple of things with carpeting. We tried to use the tile carpeting, so therefore once opposed to removing a large portion of flooring or carpet from a certain area, we could remove tiles. Also, we're looking at kind of the PVC, um, tiling that's more durable. Um, it doesn't stain, um, it can provide us a, a more robust use within our respective facilities. So I do know that building the maintenance is looking at both options from a removal of a towel from a carpeting standpoint and looking at a more durable flooring as well as we look at build out of our facilities.
Okay, wonderful, because, um, yeah, that's what I had, questions on stains and so forth.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. I do have another question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
On the, uh, Metro, Atlanta Metro Urban Area Security Initiative, what is this, um, exactly?
Is that for the MOU? Is that the MOU for it? Is this an agreement that we, I believe it's an annual agreement that we sign through the UASI, uh, organization to be able to receive grant funding? And the agreement basically says whatever equipment is purchased through that organization, then it will be used on a regional basis.
On a regional basis, okay.
Right, just like the police and fire, if the equipment that's, uh, procured through that process, then if there's a major fire, then like a search and rescue unit from the county will respond to, let's say, Fulton County or Rockdale or wherever is needed in the metro Atlanta area.
Okay, great, I understand better now, thank you for that.
Any others?
Uh, yes, Mr.-
Go ahead.
Did you have something else, Commissioner Franklin?
This is Hambrick. I was glancing, I don't see anything on here regarding the, um, um, information on the, um, supplements for the, uh, those three positions, um, sheriff-
No, I didn't think-
District Attorney and Solicitor.
No, we have it, uh, gen- it will be on there, it will be at our, added to our, uh, agenda meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
This was, this was preliminary from Monday. So there will, there's probably be some more items on there. But yes, that will be on there, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, uh, anybody else? I have two that I think will be prudent that we speak about, and I see Madam CFO is online. If she can just give us a brief snap synopsis in terms of the 8.7 million grant that will be procured for evictions and how we're going to help out our citizens. Uh, Madam CFO.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, on January the 6th, the county was notified by the, um, US Department of Treasury that we were eligible to receive emergency rental assistance. Um, they have set aside a pot of money for direct payments to counties with population above 200,000 residents. The deadline to submit our request for funding was January 12th. Dr. Shalonda Smith, um, prepared and submitted that request for funding. And on the 20th last week, we were, um, notified that we will be receiving 8.7 million dollars to provide emergency rental assistance for our citizens. This, these funds, um, they provide funding to jurisdictions to be utilized for rental assistance after 12 months, um, including arrears and utility and home energy costs for renters, including any arrears that they may have. 90% of those funds must be utilized for the rental and utility assistance. Up to 10% can be used for administrative costs, um, and how, and/or housing stability services, which includes case management and other services to keep households safely housed. So in that, on the case management part, um, we're looking to, um, give them some education in budgeting and how to manage their funds so they can, can sustain paying their rent moving forward. Um, also, the, um, there are eligibility requirements that they have to meet. They will, if they qualify for unemployment or have experience of reduction in household income, incurred significant costs or experience of financial hardship due to COVID-19, demonstrate a risk of experiencing homelessness or housing instability and has a household income at or below 80% of the area median. Priority would be given to those, um, that have a household income that's 50% below the area median. Dr. Smith and I are working together to, on securing, um, some quotes from a third party administrator because we don't have the capacity within the county to administer this program. So we're looking at a couple of, um, individuals, the people that did for Cobb County. We have a couple of local nonprofits that are doing, already doing some work in this area to administer this program for us. So, um, I just want to give you, Chairman wanted me to give you an update. It's on the agenda to be approved for us to receive the funding, um, because we have been awarded it and it's going to be on the agenda for you to approve next week, but we want to give you, um, an update, a brief overview of what the program is and how we can help our citizens with that. But it is only for rental, um, I think someone asked me, could people, homeowners for mortgages, they're, this particular pot of money cannot be used for mortgages, but they have something else set aside, I hear that they may be issuing a different pot of money to help with that as well in the future. But right now, they're focusing on rental assistance and, let me look at my phone, something I found in, um, um, email, not an email, but someone sent me a text message yesterday and I thought was really interesting because I was working on this and it was talking about how the, um, I should have had it up before we started, how the homeless, not homeless, but the renters, um, how many people are behind on their rent. Says nearly 20% of renters in America are behind on their payments for rent. So I thought it was, um, apropos that they gave us this money at this particular time and it's like billions of dollars. Um, it said the typical delinquent renter now owes $5,600, being nearly four months behind on their monthly payments. And this was on, um, from CSNBC, um, this article I was reading. And this is in total, an astounding $57.3 billion is owed by more than 10 million renters in the United States, so.
All right, well, thank you for that report. Are there any questions for Ms. Bivens from any of the-
Ms. Bivens, can I ask you, um, offhand, what is our average median? Our area median, I'm sorry, do you know the?
Our median income, so I've seen two different numbers.
Yes.
What, why, we haven't, Dr. Smith and I are looking, um, doing some research. The instructions or the guidelines that we received from the US Department of Treasury says that we can use the HUD figure and we have that information. Dr. Smith is, is going to get that. I just recently received, um, Moody's does an issue us comment, um, every year for, for the county, for counties. And on there, it had that our median income was $65,000. I found that kind of interesting because I didn't realize, I didn't think it was that high, but it may have increased. And, um, on something else that we have, um, I looked, when I looked it up online, it said that our median income was $55,000, in the $55,000 range. So we're going to be using the HUD, um, what HUD is using as the median income. And Dr. Smith is, um, obtaining that information and gathering other data as we, um, work out the process on how to, um, administer the program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have something to add, Ms. COO?
Yes, Chairman. As we're talking about, um, the, the funding for evictions, it's important as we communicate to our citizens, um, the Board, we have three buckets of funding out there. So as the CFO and Dr. Smith are working through the money that we receive from the Treasury Department, the two other buckets of funding we have out there is the $1 million that the Board of Commissioners approved of the CARES money that we're using for the disposessory. So we're working with the court system on getting those disposessaries out of the court system. And then we have about $3.7 million on the community development under the ESG program and, and HUD funding. So we have buckets of funding out there that have different qualifications. And so what we're doing is working with IT. IT is developing a website that will have this comprehensive message for evictions in the community and we'll talk about all three buckets of funding out there to see where the citizens qualify. We're hoping to have that website active no later than Monday of next week.
Great.
All right?
Any other questions for Ms. Bivens?
Yes, I have a question. Oh, go ahead. No, you go on, I, I- Mr. COO, I was trying to catch you before you went back. Um, so I'm glad to hear that, um, we're going to have the website up and running because as you were mentioning about the different buckets of funding, um, I was just thinking, you know, we've got to definitely have a streamlined approach to this. However, I, I want to make sure that as Commissioners, we receive the, um, the strategic plan for identifying those with need and which bucket they do fall in, so that, um, when we get the phone calls, we get a lot of phone calls, um, about, um, the requirements, whether it's through HUD or something else, I got a call about someone asking about why is Clayton County the only county asking for birth certificates? I don't know that we're the only county, but I got, we get that question. So I think it's imperative that we not only develop the website, but also develop a timeline of which, uh, those that will come onto the website will receive a response as well as a means of, um, identifying whether they have actually been responded to or they've received correspondence, uh, communication from our office so that we as policymakers don't have to live in that space of, um, of the operational aspect of this. We will help as much as we can, but again, when we don't have information and we're not the ones actually administering it, we, we, we take a lot of the brunt from the community. And we're already taking a lot of brunt dealing with the immunization, which we know no county has control over that. So, um, with this process, it would be extremely helpful for it to be clear, to make sure that the process is defined and that there are accountability, um, steps or something put in place to make sure people are responded to.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Uh, yes, uh-huh.
Commissioner, have a-
I'm not sure if this is COO or CFO, but CFO mentioned there, there was a, there is an amount of 8.7 million and then, uh, COO said that there are three other buckets of money. So now is that included in the 8.7 or is that in addition to the 8.7?
Separate pots of money. One is 8.7, the other is 1 point, 1 million, and the third is 3.7, 3.7. Total, separate pots of money. For, for aggregate of what, 11, 11, 12 million?
Over 11 million, let me say this, Commissioner, so, uh, we know that community development has been actively utilizing that pot because they have sub recipients that receive some of the, um, the community development funds um, through, just through the contracts they have with sub recipients like Hartschener, Hope, and some of other nonprofits in the community. So they've been spending down at 3.6 or 3.7 million. What we still have hold is the 8.7 that CFO spoke to and the $1 million that the Board allocated, um, through the CARES money for the disposessory process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, another item I'd like to bring up is police department's request for a police psychologist, I think. Uh, it'd be, again, beneficial for us to get some insight as to why they are requesting that. Uh, is one of y'all going to present or the chief is online here, Chief Roberts?
Can you hear me, Chairman?
Yes, sir. Uh, basically, if you could, if you could just give, uh, the Board a explanation or a logic, a logical reasoning as to, uh, your request when it comes to the police psychologist position you're asking for.
It's actually the police social worker position?
Excuse me, ma'am. Yes, you're fine.
It's, it's actually the police social worker position and the objective is to provide an alternative to officers responding to citizens in crisis where a mental health practitioner would be more appropriate than a police officer. And it's also to avoid some of the incidents that we've seen across the nation over the past year where you had officers interacting in situations where a mental health practitioner would likely be more appropriate to bring the matter to resolution through de-escalation and medical expertise. Um, my, my long-term objective is to start with one police community social worker and grow that number to at least three, so we have that around-the-clock service, supported also by centers like our Clayton Community Service Board, who I've been in contact with over the last six months, specifically Dr. Adams, to try to coordinate other avenues of mental health support in Clayton County. Whereas the police aren't doing things that they're not exceptionally skilled at. We do have crisis intervention training, but we are not mental health practitioners nor medical practitioners and I think we need to get more of those folks in partnership with law enforcement to ensure we're getting the best service to our citizens that we can.
Absolutely, and I might add that, uh, the chief and I spoke about this, uh, a while back. This is a practice that is catching on throughout the country. Uh, I think the city of Brookhaven is currently, they have two or three on staff that they are exercising. Uh, but it's very important that we start recognizing mental health for what it is. We all know that everybody who are in a situation doesn't need to go to jail, but it's best that we can, when possible, understand what's going on with a person before we have that engagement or interaction with them that could possibly lead to any type of violent, uh, response from the police department. So I thought it was a good idea and a good plan on the chief's part to move forward with it. Did you have something, COO?
Yeah, Chairman, um, Board, the last thing is, um, as we continue to talk about continuity in government, uh, one of the things that the Board has already approved under the SPOTs program, you know, we have a behavioral health facility in the crisis center that's under the new SPOTs program. So one of the things that the chief and the chairman and the Board has been talking about, how do we bridge the services that the police officers are presently in space and ensure we have facilities that won't put you in an environment of a hospital or a jail? So the behavioral health center that will be coming onboard at some point in time, this will be a good marriage with the social worker that's under PD and the behavioral health facility that will be onboard and hopefully in the next two years. So when we talk about bridging resources and building out facilities that are already have been approved by this Board, um, it just only makes sense that we now prep, um, our personnel on the front end, so when we have facilities on the back end for them to now reside in, then ultimately we have already married that well, well before the facility is onboarded. So just wanted to make sure you had an understanding of, when we talk about this behavioral health facility or correction, or crisis facility that's part of the new SPOTs program, then that will be a way of bridging, uh, operations with our, um, capital outlay part.
Any questions for the chief or COO? All right, thank you, Chief Roberts. All right, next we're going to, we're going to have a, uh, presentation from Lexi Morgan, Ms. Morgan, in reference to Keep Clayton County Beautiful. You're welcome.
Hello, Board, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Lexi Morgan and I'm the Program Manager for Keep Clayton County Beautiful. Um, my presentation to you today is Keep Clayton County Beautiful or KCCB at a glance. Uh, also, just a quick announcement, I just got braces, so if you see my lip get stuck or anything like that, I'm still getting used to these. Um, so I'll go ahead and get started. Um, the KCCB mission is to educate, inspire, and improve. With a strong focus in community and environmental improvements, the KCC program is guided by four core values. Um, education and communication, which we are looking to develop fresh perspectives for Clayton County, as well as promote community engagement. Individual responsibility, enhancing and improving the quality, oh, excuse me, um, individual responsibility, which is enhancing and improving the quality of life, which begins with the residents and individuals becoming more engaged as citizens and stewards of the environment. Partnerships, which entails building and maintaining comprehensive-based community alliance, which are essential to achieve long-term community improvements. Um, and lastly, volunteer action, which is engaging volunteers to turn education and knowledge into visible results. Um, some of the community goals, which revolve around land use, economic development, housing, transportation, community facilities, natural and cultural resources. Um, the goals include to improve quality of life for all residents, business development and promotion, maintenance of existing housing, improve traffic flow and quality of roadways, improve quality of life through focus on health, safety, and welfare of residents. Um, lastly, to protect and conserve existing natural resources. Um, through this presentation, I will show you the groundwork and the KCCB framework and barriers that has already been completed and what you can expect to see in the near future. Um, the what includes the strategies, programs, initiatives, and grants to be achieved or completed. The who, uh, is each individual responsible for each goal or task, when the timeline for each goal and when is it projected to be completed. Um, I'll also go or go over and address any barriers that we've encountered due to COVID-19. One of the first goals that we're looking to initiate is the Adopt a Spot initiative. Adopt a Spot is an initiative created to amplify litter prevention and assist citizens who desire to actively participate and engage within the community. This initiative seeks the support and help of volunteers to remove litter and illegal signage from Clayton County roadsides, rite of ways, and martis stops. Some of the success indicators that you can look for this year, um, within the calendar year, but it's my hope for the, before the end of the fiscal year is to have 30 adopted spots or roads. Um, we will begin advertising for this initiative, hopefully this week, but within the next one to two weeks. Um, and the status is in progress. Some of the key activities include, um, assigning organizations, spots, or roads to maintain cleanliness and identifying subdivisions that are near a three-mile radar of the new median construction for outreach of the Adopt a Spot initiative. Second, we have Bring One to the Chipper, which is a Christmas tree recycling event. This will serve as our annual Christmas tree recycling event as, and as opposed to being dumped on the side of the road or taken to a landfill, trees will be recycled and turned into mulch and made available to businesses, schools, and residents free of charge. Um, the success indicator for this program would be 100 collected, uh, or disposed trees and the timeline of completion date is looking towards January 2022. Um, obviously, we don't want to do it right at the end of Christmas because people usually dispose of their trees after New Year's Eve. Um, some of the key activities would be to organize locations and mulchers for proper disposal of the Christmas trees. The third goal or program that we are looking to initiate is the Amnesty Cleanup Day or Days. Um, it's a campaign designed, designed to eliminate dumping within the county. Um, this event will provide constituents with the opportunity to properly dispose of large items. Um, the success indicator is to host one amnesty day per district, um, throughout this calendar, this fiscal year. Um, and then the timeline of completion is one per fiscal quarter. Some of the key activities include to organize locations and junk removal for proper disposals of large items to eliminate dumping. The next initiative we have is to start a countywide, uh, department recycling initiative. Um, I know that there are a lot of electronics that kind of go to waste that they can be properly disposed of or used for other purposes. Instead of just being thrown out as trash, we can actually recycle them and they can be used, uh, reused in the near future for other, um, methods or items. The success indicator for this is to have the participation of at least 10 departments. Um, some of these initiatives will assist with collecting data so we can apply for grants in the future. Um, that's one of the obstacles that we currently have is just determining data or using it for applications to qualify for grants at this time. Next, we have to evaluate opportunities for alliances and affiliations. Um, we would like to host opportunities in conjunction with, um, some of the other organizations that are already in existence like Keep America Beautiful, Keep Georgia Beautiful, Keep Riverdale Beautiful, et cetera. Um, there are a lot of other jurisdictions that we can partner with for events just to, um, amplify our outreach. Um, it hasn't occurred at this time, basically everyone is kind of feeling the effects of COVID, but hopefully this fiscal year, everyone has adapted to our new normal and will be able to proceed, um, in the near future. Um, and basically, the main key activity for this is to locate opportunities for alliances and affiliations. Um, next we have to partner with civic-based organizations. It is my hope to use the Quality of Life Community Enhancement Program to achieve these alliances and to partner with people. Um, if you're not familiar with the program, I highlighted some things, but, um, a lot of the community wants to use it to, um, improve signage and that is kind of something that can't occur at this time due to legality of the gratuity clause. So I'm hoping to use what is actually explicitly outlined for, um, to improve the relationships that we have in the county or people that are looking to do something or some type of improvement within the county. Um, next we have to partner with CCPS or the Clayton County Public School System to further knowledge and promote engagement. We would just like to partner with the youth to further our mission. Um, it is our hope that we can partner with 15 schools or programs. It doesn't have to necessarily be the school itself, but maybe there's a 4-H program or there is an environmental club that we can partner with. And then also just starting very young and going to the elementary schools and speaking to them. Some of the key activities include collaborating with CCPS to perform outreach regarding case, our program, KCCB and recycling education and beautification, uh, within elementary schools or K through 12. So next we have to partner with local agencies to increase communication and education efforts. Um, we hope to partner with local churches, businesses, and other, um, organizations to in- increase outreach. Obviously churches, well, I don't know if churches are open at this time, but the most, the ones that we've encountered are not open. Um, so it's our hope to supersede that and at least go to the other organizations that are open, whether it's fraternities or colleges, um, or businesses, just so we can provide more information and education to be shared and also the program that we have any volunteers that would like to outreach with our program. I believe this is my last slide, but, um, the last goal is to identify grants to further fund the KCCB mission. Um, with the Adopt a Spot launching, I hope that we can collect data based on the trash collected and the trash issue that we currently have within the county. Um, with that information, I hope that we can apply for at least five grants. Uh, we've currently been researching them, so we have a running list of grants that we'll apply for. Um, but once we get the data used, um, I'm hoping that it will assist us with qualifying for more of the grants that we've located. The, oh, well, I thought the other one was the last one, excuse me. But, um, next we have to create public spaces that promote community health, happiness, and well-being. Um, I will hopefully continue to outreach with the Commissioners in the near future. I know I spoke to Commissioner Singleton Gregory about what she would like for her community-based project to revolve around. Um, and also Commissioner Franklin Warner, um, I spoke with her representatives and she also, or they provided, um, outlook on what her direction would be as far as her community project. So hopefully, uh, within the next coming days or weeks, I'll be able to, um- So hopefully, within the next coming days or weeks, I'll be able to collaborate with the other commissioners that I haven't had outreach with at this time, but I know everyone's extremely busy. Next, we have to evaluate the opportunities for the ARC Green Communities. This is a really extensive application that requires the involvement of the entire county, so I would have to get each of the departments involved. We've separated all of the goals and measures based on department, so hopefully we'll be outreaching with each of the departments that we have assigned based on the application. But if you're not familiar with the program, it's a voluntary certification program that helps local governments implement measures that will reduce their environmental impact. The program aims to create a greener, healthier, and more livable region. At this time, what we would be able to obtain is a new leaf level, so hopefully we'll have that completed by December. It's currently in progress, but with the impact of COVID, we haven't been able to get everyone congregated the way we would like. But once we launch this program and we have more focus, it's my hope that we'll be able to involve the other departments for this certification. Okay, I know this one is the last one, sorry guys. So Volunteer Clayton is a program that's designed for constituents, businesses, and et cetera, to volunteer their time or services to the county for existing or future projects. I'm hoping once it's launched, essentially it will serve as like a database where constituents or anyone in the county, or anywhere, would like to volunteer their services, or if they have a landscaping business, and we have like an elderly citizen who is unable to cut their grass at the time, but code enforcement isn't able to go out. It is my hope that we'll have maybe a landscaping business that we can contact, and they'll be able to perform that service free of charge, so that we can save taxpayers' dollars. So this will be launching actually after Adopt a Spot, and I have realized that Clayton County has a lot of willing constituents and residents that are ready to pitch in, so I'm really excited about this project up and coming. And I'll just leave with the vision, the mission, and the goal. The vision is that Clayton County will serve as the archway between the region and the world by creating endless opportunities for all citizens to live, work, and play. The mission is to maintain a community-focused environment committed to maintaining a positive and effective atmosphere while providing access to resources that are beneficial to the economic growth and prosperity of our citizens, businesses, and employees. And our goal is to inspire and educate people to take action every day to improve and beautify their community environment. So thank you all for your time, that concludes my presentation.
Please, Mr. Garber. Mr. Garber, please, thank you. All right, thank you for your presentation, are there any questions for Ms. Morgan? See, you got a lot on the, on your, on your, on your plate. So, and we do understand that a lot of these projects are being held up because of the COVID and the restrictions and requirements that don't allow a lot of face-to-face interaction. But the biggest thing is the engage, for me, the engagement and the public education piece. So I'm looking forward to whenever the school gets back in, into face-to-face, to initiating that program. Are there any other?
Mr. Chairman, I have something.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Yeah, I was listening and all, and I know I was promoted, acclaimed to be the one against Keep Clayton Beautiful and all that, and it's been in existence for how long now?
You talking about our program?
Right, this program, we voted it in, I mean, we actually, anyway. A couple, two things. One is, I noticed the presentation had a lot of hopefully, have to, try to. So I, I mean, where are we right now with the program? What are we actually doing, you know, on the ground? And I'm asking that because yesterday, I, one of the days I got out and did some of my appointments and all, and I left home, and, and thank, thanks to Warden and Captain McDonald and all that, because we called them, I called Tina on my phone in the car and all, and they got all this done. I'm trying to relate that to Keep Clayton Beautiful, you know, because I, I mean, trash on it. I was headed to the interstate and all, the ramps, and then coming back, and then even where Ford used to be where Porsche is now, I don't know if that's Clayton, where Clayton starts or whatever, like somebody just throw trash or whatever and all, and we reported all that, and I'm sure they'll clean it up. But I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to put that with Keep Clayton Beautiful. How does that relate to all of what I saw, I'm just so, I mean, I was just so down.
Commissioner Ham-
Seeing all this trash.
Commissioner Hambrick, let me-
I'm trying to put the two together, so somebody help me.
Yeah, the Keep Clayton Beautiful Initiative is more programmatic in terms of educating and coming up with programs and volunteerism, to have people to help us, that maybe police areas, and to teach kids not to litter. What the Warden does is basically, once the litter has hit the ground and has blighted areas, then they go out and clean up those areas. So that's the fundamental, basic difference between the two.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Commissioner Gregory.
Commissioner, you know, the, the last time we had a Keep Clayton Beautiful program, it, 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 it did nothing. And I see up here like where the program coordinator talked about getting with the Keep Clayton, Keep America Beautiful, and so forth and so forth. You know, and, and that Keep America Beautiful, all, mostly all they're doing is just going to trainings, whatever, whatever, whatever. And I just see some, our need in this county right now is just more getting out, getting people together, focusing totally on people taking pride in their community, and not necessarily just connecting with these Keep America Beautiful programs and all of, all of this, instead of the schools, because we know we're gonna get kickback, well, I suspect we'll get kickback from the schools. It's just as simple as schools got a certain number of hours of curriculum a day that they have to do. People come all the time and want to do this in the schools and all that, but they've got to get that curriculum activity in. And I suspect once this COVID environment is over, because of the lost learning, you know, the schools are not just gonna be as cooperative. So I'm, we got Parks and Rec right here, where we hit the kids. So we don't really have to necessarily, you know, try to use the schools to get the program together. It would be great to have environmental clubs, but why not, you know, to Keep Clayton Beautiful person just start working on getting these environmental clubs formed within our rec center, and get our young people more involved in keeping our county clean. I just think that some of these things that I saw, it was like what we did before, and it didn't work. I'm, I'm just, you know, that's just my opinion. And I just think, again, instead of us just going through a whole bunch of what, what we're doing, we, we just simply need to get to the grind and, and get things done. I mean, there's the extension service to partner with it, with their kids' programs and so forth, to try to get them more involved, but just to, I, I'm feeling that I see another, just a, another program coming where it's just, oh yeah, we went to this conference and this and that, whatever. And, and, and then the county's still dirty. And, and to, to-
Hold on a second, Commissioner Hambrick. Commissioner Hambrick, Ms. Morgan wanted to respond.
Just to your point about the 4-H, 4-H extension, I have reached out to them regarding their gardening club and other programs that they have right now, but they are searching for a coordinator at the time when I was reaching out to them. So due to that program or them not having a coordinator, I postponed it until they did have one that I could actually work in conjunction with. And then as far as the school system, it's pretty much out of my hand, but I do understand your point about the recreation center and getting students there. It was just my understanding that the recreation center would provide more to the sports or something of that nature, and I do take your point to heart, and that's something that I'll look into. But I've been in the county for ten years now, so I just want all of you to understand how vested I am in this program. I'm aware of its existence, and I know that cleanliness has been something that's been in the talk since two thousand and eight, I believe. So knowing this, and also with my past history working with code enforcement and community development, I've been in conjunction and talking to the community, as well as my knowledge of nuisance abatement and things that we can't supersede, even though we want to improve this. So I understand your inquiry about the length, but I also wanted to provide the groundwork and make sure it's sufficient instead of launching something that would fall apart once it was put, or once it was launched. So basically, what I was providing to you today was our outline of the things that we're going to put into motion. I know someone mentioned that there was a lot of hopefully, but basically that, those linguistics were based off of the COVID-19 environment. So it is my hope that we'll be able to partner with the agencies that are around us in the, or in the community. But at this time, that is the information that I have that I can provide a solid answer on. But what I can give are the programs that are about to be launched, which I previously mentioned would be Adopt a Spot. And to your point, I've worked with GIS to identify the problem areas, areas that have received a multiple, a multitude of citations, just to put those at the forefront of the adoption. I know that some people will want to adopt roads that are close to their subdivision or that it's easy for them to maintain. But at this time, we know that the corridors or the entrances to Clayton County are very important for people that travel through here. So I just wanted to provide that insight to you, because that isn't something that I spoke on in my presentation, but I am well aware, and the point to the Recreation Department or working with Parks and Rec is something that I'll take heed to.
Okay, I have a question, thank you Ms. Lexi Morgan, I think.
Commissioner Franklin.
All right, I don't think we ever received the answer to how long this program has been in place. And I'm, and, and I'm really cautious about saying program, because I was one that was excited about the opportunity to be able to clean up the county and get it clean. But I have a couple of questions, and the first one is, how long has this office been in place? And how much has it cost us so far in that period of time?
So I believe it was approved in November two thousand and nineteen, and I was hired at the end of December two thousand and nineteen. I began the framework between January and March, and then I believe the county closed during that time, in which I wasn't in the office, and I was also personally affected by COVID with my family.
No, no, don't go into personal things, please don't. We're not doing that, I don't want you to do that, I don't want you to divulge any personal information.
No problem.
The line of questioning is specific, because I was one that voted for this initiative. But at the same token, as a policymaker, we are getting slammed. I get emails, I get social media posts even about the county being completely dirty, and not even in particular district that I serve. And I know that the Warden and his folks are doing the best that they can, regardless of COVID. And so I want us to bear in mind, we know that COVID is not going away anytime soon. We cannot continue to use COVID as a crutch, because we have to continue to function as a government. And as we just stated earlier, we understand that there are a lot of people that may be possibly losing their place to lay their hand. And so that's gonna give an opportunity for increased things on the road. As Commissioner, I have often had to call, as the other commissioners alluded to, call Warden Nelson, who was Johnny on the spot, because it's so much work- So much, because it's so much work to be done, there are times that I had to break down and call the sheriff to send his skip team out. So I do have concern regardless of anything about how long this program has been in place. It doesn't take a year to get something up and running. And then secondly, how much money have we spent? Because what I saw in this presentation is, I'm absent of the Business Improvement District's opportunities, the CID opportunity, coordination with GDOT, and there's no metric of what has been completed. And I believe the other commissioners alluded to, all of it says in progress, in progress. But the community is expecting us to deliver. So how much have we spent? I know you may not know, but I think CFO is on here. So how much have we spent in a year's time to be able to receive this presentation that we received tonight?
So Commissioner, the budget associated with the Keep Clayton Beautiful space was salaries, and I think we might have allocated somewhere between twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars for the operations side. Because a lot of it is about getting supplies and material like bags, gloves, to help coordinate volunteer opportunities, that money has not been spent. So the bulk of the money that we spent up to this time has been in the salaries for the program manager.
I'm glad, and I want a specific answer, if you may. Thank you for your response, but I'm just gonna say, we had gloves, we had bags, what was it, two years ago when we all met over at the facility across the street from here? And we went out there at teams and picked up trash. So again, as a policymaker, I'm hearing from my constituents that they can't get in contact with this office, there's never a return phone call, and it was even alluded to that we had a meeting? Well, that meeting that was, that I had was oh-so-long ago. So I'm gonna ask again, I want a specific number of how much has this county spent total? Not how it's delegated, I want to know the total amount that we spent, and what has been achieved.
We have to provide that dollar amount to you, Commissioner, we don't have that number available at this moment.
The CFO is on, Mr., I don't mean to be disrespectful or anyway, but we are responsible to this public, so I need a figure.
Okay, Commissioner, I will have to find, get that, pull that budget up as, to, to tell you how much I just, okay? It's gonna be a minute, I'm gonna have to look it up, I don't have it, I don't keep, I don't keep department budgets in front of me at all times, so.
I tell you what, no worries. Okay, no worries. Mr. Reed, if you could have someone pull when we approved it then? Because again, we are responsible to the community which elected us, and this is a year.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the legal departments, I have access to finance, I can pull the actual amount, the, when, how much they spent year-to-date since inception each fiscal year. I don't have it, I can't put my hand in right this minute, it's gonna take me a while, I'm going to the system to get it, I will email it to all the commissioners once I have it.
Okay, thank you, but I want it in the next meeting, and we want to announce it to the people. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Can I say?
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you for the presentation. One of the things I did like in the presentation, with each goal, there was an indicator of success, so we can figure out how, what is going to be success. But what I want to say is this, there's two things you cannot legislate, morality and cleanliness. We just have some nasty people around that throw up the trash out the windows. So I don't care if we allocate a dollar or a billion dollars towards cleaning up this county, it's not gonna stay a hundred percent clean. Everybody wants somebody else to pick up trash. But are we getting out and picking up trash ourselves? So I think we have to take it amongst ourselves while being fiscally responsible to keep this county clean. So I mean, granted, a program is gonna be in place, the question becomes, like I said, I, I like seeing the metrics of the success indicators, and I think that's what keeps us accountable. Because we put every program I've, well, not every, many of the programs I've seen and pro, pro, projects come through, I've not seen any indicator of success on anything. And we think they're grand programs or grand projects. So we have to begin to give something ample time to show a return on investment.
Yeah, and in addition to that, I'm just gonna add that, you know, I hear, heard what Commissioner Gregory said about the schools, but I'm not giving up on the schools. I think that we need to try to get in schools to try to educate as many kids as possible, even if it's at rec center, that we know we got fifty-five thousand kids who go to school. We gotta start with the young kids. Hopefully, they will be able to be educated to the point where they know the value and have a pride in themselves where they don't, won't want to throw trash on the ground, and to want to even help mitigate the problem by helping picking up, picking up the trash. So I think we have to at least try, and like Commissioner Davis said, there are indicators as to how successful, and we just peel back down, we, we go hard and strong at the programs that are working, but we have to do something at the end of the day to make sure that this county gets clean.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Hambrick.
I, I've heard what you said about the schools and what they've said too, but, and a little bit of what Commissioner Gregory said too. And, and I can understand why the educators and all, the schools can't do everything.
And not, and not the county.
At home, and, and until that's done, then, you know, I think we'll continue to have a problem. You know, when I, when my kids were little and now grandkids were riding with me, they know, don't throw trash out anyplace or whatever, so that has to be taught before they get to school and all. But I, I do have a question, and I know that Forest Park had this program, Keep Forest Park Beautiful, what, what's the status of that program now?
It's still active, Commissioner, along with Riverdale as well. So those two cities certainly still have an active program, but let me say, both-
Are, are you sure about Forest Park?
Forest Park has, they, they now- Forest Park has, they, they've now infused that under their Parks Department, working with, um, uh, Mr. Maxwell, Tariq Maxwell, the director. They now have that, um, ingrained in their, their Parks Department. So they'll, they have a, a green sustain- sustainability program that's done in conjunction with their Parks Department.
So they don't have a separate some, they have it included in Parks and Rec?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a great idea. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get back to the fiscal responsibility. I really, really do. I think that, um, uh, Commissioner hit the nail on the head about the matrix and the success matrix. Um, we are to, um, be good servants or stewards, um, and to be fiscally responsible. And we all know that there's, there is an issue. Nobody's running away from that. How we approach that issue, it seems like after a year, we're still pulling ideas out of the air. And, um, but at the end of the day, we have to step back and see if what we have done within a year's time is worth the money that we have spent. Because even what I have heard tonight, it's things that as Commissioner Hamburg alluded to, can be done such as, um, Forest Park is doing or Riverdale that has more of a community-based, um, program. Um, and we are already doing a lot of this work through, um, Captain McDonald and his folks. Again, I'm the one that helped to vote this in and I'm, I want our county clean. But we have to ask ourselves, have we spent the county's money in a, um, in a way that we're seeing results? And if not, especially in COVID, if the one thing we need to be doing in COVID is watch how we're spending our money, is it effective? Commissioner Davis alluded to it. Is it effective? What's the matrix? Not ideas, what's the matrix? Because we can pull people together from the community, I heard Mr. Mickey Garber get out there and clap his hands. There are people in the community who know what can be done. They will organize. And yes, we are picking up Mr. Dave, Commissioner Davis. My, the community in which I serve, there are people who pick up daily. Ms. Grisby, they're picking up daily. There are things that we gotta do to get people out of a mindset. But at the end of the day, my one question tonight, what has been accomplished in the timeframe and how much money? And it, have we been fiscally responsible? Can we see that it's effective?
You have an answer for that?
I, I, I think she's making a statement. That was rhetorical, Commissioner, or you-
No, that was not a statement.
No, she wanted to answer.
I'm just gonna wait, we're gonna wait. No. I, I still have not heard to what Commissioner Davis said and Commissioner Gregory and Commissioner Hamburg all have asked tonight, what has been accomplished in a year's time?
I didn't ask that. That's not what I asked.
What questions you asked?
Well, if you didn't ask it, I'm asking it. What has been accomplished in the year?
Again, I think, um, Ms. Morgan outlined, um, what the, the desires of the program have been. The majority of the work that is predicated upon the success of this program is getting out and soliciting volunteers. If from March of 2020 up to this present time, you have not had the ability with a, an office of one for her to get out and provide context to the general lay citizens to solicit volunteer work. Now let me provide clarification about the Riverdale and the Forest Park program. Those, those programs are still in place, but those programs are not active. Those programs haven't been active since March of 2020. They're still intact, but there had been actively going out and providing what we consider sustainable and green infrastructure programs, um, since 2020 of last year. So I, I'm with you, Commissioner. I don't think you're ever skirting for, around, around the fact that there has not been substantive return on investment and that's what you wanna hear. There has not been substantive return on investment as it retains to this program. I don't think we're skirting away from that. We're just trying to provide context of what's in place now and what we're doing to try to correct that as we're getting better as for our overall environment.
Thank you, and I heard you say about volunteers, this is the last thing I really am gonna say. You have to return phone calls when volunteers are calling.
I don't-
I'm just gonna say that again.
I don't disagree with that.
Ramona Bivens is part of an organization that has talked and with me, that has talked continually about trying to reach out to this division to come up with ways. And that organization has leaders in it and that we have not received a phone call. So I, 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 I just wanna leave that on record because as a policymaker, we're responsible and we're accountable. We're fiscally responsible and we've got to be accountable.
Love to have a larger conversation offline, commissioners, to what's happening with that space as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I look forward to it.
I have another, um, statement, and it's the chair. I did not say give up on them. I'm just saying that it's a start when we deal with children in our Parks and Recreation Department. Um, that's a start there instead of us trying to knock down another wall with the school system and they, just like everybody else, has a slew of, you know, COVID-related issues going on. And like I said, with, once we get back in the building, trying to make up for all this lost learning and so forth. And unfortunately, um, getting that learning back is gonna be more important than, than at an environmental club. So for right now, I'm just saying a start could be because these rec centers do have their little team clubs. They have all of that, that's a great start there. Um, you all know, uh, cleaning up this county, everybody's very passionate about that and, and we get beat up. I mean, totally. That's a website I could take you on right now and people are blaming me. And that's what is, uh, what is Clayton County doing or they, they Keep Clayton or whatever, we started a Keep Clayton. What is, what are you doing? And it comes back to the commissioner.
That's right.
That's just it. And so, uh, you know, as I sit here and I know, uh, you know, perhaps you know, we have these, you know, little attitudes or whatever, but, but this is just simply real. Everybody know dirtiness and cleanliness has been all of our pet peeves for a long time. And we're just talking about not, I'm talking about not getting out here, connecting with this Keep Clayton Beautiful organization that doesn't do anything. I mean, when, I don't think I supported this, but when it was done, I thought, okay, it was gonna be something in-house that Clayton County can tailor for itself and make it its own and so forth. But when you, you know, start paying your dues to the Keep Clayton, uh, Keep America Beautiful and all of that, we're, we're not getting anywhere. We're just not. Um, I mean, that, that's just it. This county dirty. I mean, Mr. Chair, everybody ought to be up in arms tonight about this county being dirty. I'm just, I'm just saying that it's not a negative on, on Ms. Morgan. It's definitely not. But I don't think any, I think everybody should be as passionate right now as those of us who are very, very citizen-focused and not so, you know, whatever or, or being funny or whatever. Cause this is a serious deal.
Agreed. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you for your presentation, uh, Ms. Morgan, and I'm sure we'll be speaking more on this topic.
All right, thank you, board.
All right, that was the last presentation for the work session, so nothing else? Any announcements? Anybody need to make any announcement?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
I could probably wait till February 6th too. But, uh, we have a, a reading event on January 30th, uh, where I invite people to go to the library's website, uh, and have your children be able to join in on a book. Also, don't forget that February is, um, uh, not just Black History Month, but it's also, um, Library Lovers Month. So it's a great opportunity for our students, as we talk about our children, to stay busy with something to do. So we invite people to do that and, uh, hopefully I'll see folks on February 6th as you join me for our, um, town hall, Transforming Our Community. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, um, the ability to be able to share that information.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody have anything else? All right, hearing nothing else, we stand adjourned. Have a good night.